We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's Legislative Work Session for tonight. It's September the first, 2022. We have already had our invocation that was done earlier in our special call meeting, so I will move on with the agenda, and we have announcements and presentations, and we do have a presentation, and it is for presentation by NFP regarding annual medical dental vision and life insurance coverage for the City of Douglasville for 2023, and Ms. Tia Austin-Beam, our Human Resources Director, will present to us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tia Austin-Beam, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. Tonight, we have our annual presentation to you from our benefits broker, NFP, to review our recommendations for our 2023 Benefits Plan year. We have Mr. Shaw here with NFP to provide you our overview of what we are recommending for our employee benefits. So I asked Mr. Shaw to come up. You also have an attachment to review, and Mr. Shaw has handouts in case anyone wants a handout. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great.
Does anyone, would anyone like a handout? Are you good with the digital?
We have them on our tablets.
Okay, perfect. So it is that time of the year, as Tia mentioned, so our team, as well as the team with City of Douglasville, have been working hard in the background to come to this evening as far as renewal and planning for the 2023 Benefits Year. It was a very successful year. What you have in front of you is an illustration of our marketing efforts. So with each line of coverage, whether it be medical coverage, the Medicare Advantage, dental coverage, all of those things were up for underwriting and for review. So we went to the marketplace and explored different creative funding solutions. We looked at outside carriers, and at the end of the day, you'll see highlighted in green the recommendations moving forward, which would be remaining with the same insurance company for your major medical with Anthem, with the same exact health plan. Originally, it called for a 12% rate increase, but we were able to negotiate a rate concession, so it results in a 7% rate increase. We also were able to build in a major increase to your wellness fund. So currently, the City of Douglasville has provided $20,000 of wellness funds to apply towards the wellness program. We improved that from $20,000 to $50,000, so a significant increase there added to the offering from Anthem. So you can see the difference in premium, but it's my understanding that payroll deductions will remain the same for 2023. So in our efforts of marketing, not only do we look at total premium costs, but we also look at network accessibility as well as disruption. And any time that you can offer the employees of an organization, especially like the City of Douglasville, the same plan design with the same carrier at the same payroll deductions, that's a major success. So as well as the Medicare Advantage for our post-65 retirees, you can see that the current premium, total premium, is just over $190,000. Humana originally came out with a rate increase, and we went back to them and leveraged and pushed for the City of Douglasville, resulting in actually a rate decrease of total premium. So you'll see there's $171,778. As far as dental, this would require a change in carrier, the recommendation. So we would be moving from Anthem, who's currently total premium of $181,582, and we're recommending MetLife at $171,038. If you look, you may see that a few, such as Beam, do have a lower cost or lower total premium, but the difference being that disruption piece as well as network accessibility. So overall, MetLife is the best match, generating savings of about $10,000 annually, as well as increasing the network and fee schedule for the employees when they utilize the services. So vision insurance is still under rate guarantee, so it will remain with Anthem, same network, same plan design, same payroll deductions, as well as the life and disability. And then your flexible spending and HRA reimbursement account is currently administered through TASK. We did market that, but we did not see any savings or any reason to make that change, again minimizing disruption. So are there any questions?
Any questions, Council? I think you've explained it. You've explained it very well.
Awesome. Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And happy birthday, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
So I hope you have a wonderful day, and thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
You have anything else for us, Ms. Austin-Beam?
Yes, ma'am. Just one note. If you show a recommendation to move forward with our recommendations, we will have those contracts presented on the next round for signature.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. We'll move on then to the next agenda item, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have an announcement set this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance has one item tonight. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Val Fuel, Zour, and Associates Incorporated, BSA, for the city's use of administrative and finance software products and services for internal operations. Ms. Callan?
Yes, sir. Karen Callan, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. This is something we discussed during our annual budget process. This is a $162,000 contract with BSNA, which is our current software provider, and this takes us to a cloud-based ERP system. I've got Mr. Jenkins here for any technical questions. But I do have some points under my memo about why we are recommending BSNA, going to the cloud-based, and I will let him go over some of those if you want to. But right now, we do have cost savings from annual data storage. Customer service will be improved from the Community Development Department. The building officials can go out and do things on-site. So, and then some security issues, ease of accessibility for end-users. But Sam can talk about the technical stuff.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Sam Jenkins, 6695 Church Street. But basically, the cloud version is the version that pretty much all development are pretty much going and developing now. The on-prem version that we have now currently is not being developed at the speed or it kind of, actually, is going away to on-prem devices. The version that we're running is going to become an end-of-life next year, so we have to like move forward. We're going to the next step. But what the cloud version will allow us, though, it allows all the new innovation, all the new things that we pretty much need going forward to give us what we need. So now, our staff will be able to like do BSNA on their iPads. They'll be able to do it mobile. It'll still be, it'll be high-security. They have it like hosted up in Amazon Web Services throughout multiple parts of the country, just in case, so it'll minimize downtime. They're just a new way of doing business. They move these pertinent services to the cloud-based solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Is BSNA is the company that we have used for many years for this type of support. The difference will be, we'll be going from whatever that system was that you talked about to a cloud-based system, correct?
Yes, sir. And not only that, you also get the enhanced features. So instead of it being hosted here on-prem, it will be hosted like in Amazon and Microsoft Clouds. But it will be all the enhancement with all the new features and things like that that they are enhancing now, too. The current version that we have on-prem, they're not enhancing those, so we won't get all the latest and greatest that they are coming out with. For instance, some of it would be like payments. They add in some more payments to the online version, but they're not building like their payments on the on-prem versions. So all the enhancement going forward, those are the ones they are actually building up their cloud subscription version.
Okay. Is this something that we're doing, Mr. Jenkins, just because that is now available, or is it time to renew that contract?
Both.
Both.
Both. So net, net share, the equipment that we have now is coming end-of-life, so we have to make the move, and that's the better choice to choose these days right here. We can go with the on-prem, but they are advising us not to. They advise us to go to a cloud version. And now, they, actually, it's a year out. So we signed a contract today. It's a year out. So they're not taking on, everybody trying to get there, all the other cities trying to get there. So they only taking on so many at one time. So Ms. Callan here got some pull with the representatives to pull us in line so we can meet our deadline of the end of next year.
Okay.
Getting it developed.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, Council? Madam Mayor, anyone?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, then is this something that we need to actually vote on, or can we place it on the consent agenda? Is that, is that proper?
Consent agenda, thanks.
Everyone is okay with it. I would like to see that placed on the consent agenda, then. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, Ms. Callan. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask you please to take the Housing and Community Affairs Committee as your vice chair for that committee.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Housing and Community Affairs has no business tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have several items like I'm on Front Street. Okay. Item A, authorize the mayor to sign the Internal Government memorandum of understanding between Cobb and Douglas Public Health in City of Douglasville regarding procedures during a public health emergency. Ms. Hampton, please.
Yes, sir. After conferring with the police chief, he and I have looked over this agreement. This is a standard agreement with the Cobb Douglas Health Department, mainly due to what's the recent activity during the pandemic. So this allows for us to continue to have a working relationship with that organization. The prior agreement was out of date. This one just updates it for future use.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Mayor and Council? If not, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Tuesday. Okay. Moving on. Item B, amend Section 1881 of the Code of the Ordinance for the City of Douglasville to increase fees charged by Douglas County Animal Control for the reclaiming of impound animals and for other purpose. Ms. Miranda Jordan?
Thank you, Councilwoman Miranda Jordan, 6695 Church Street. The county recently updated their animal ordinance to update some of the fines for reclaiming animals, for transporting animals that have gotten loose, such as livestock, goats, cows, et cetera, and just kind of made a simplified process to have the previous ordinance, as you can see on page two of the attachment, shows the current one and then the proposed revision. It just kind of streamlines what those charges are going to be. There's not a first, second, third offense. There's just the offense, and this doesn't really take into consideration necessarily any kind of citation, which is also dealt with through different ordinance. But this is just to be able to get your animal back that's been either moved somewhere for holding or that's being held at the animal shelter. I do have Vanessa Franzakowski. She is the Animal Services Director for the county here. And Vanessa, if you'd like to come up to the podium for any questions.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, City Council. Thank you for having me here today.
Yes, ma'am. If you could please give us your name and address for the record. I neglected to give those instructions in the beginning of the meeting. I apologize.
Not a problem. It's Vanessa Franzakowski, and it's 2171 Mack Road.
Yes, ma'am.
So we are here to go ahead and ask to have the ordinance updated. The ordinance as it stands has not been updated in about 20 years. So with that, we've gone through economic growth, changes, losses, and we do want to be comparative to the surrounding counties. Douglas County Animal Services does offer and provide more services than most counties in our surrounding area. We do want to have our fees in line with the services that we provide as well. In going with these, the costs have increased, not only for people in general, you know, groceries, gas, it's increased in the animal welfare world as well. The cost of vaccines, food, and just overhead has increased, so we wanted to go ahead and make our reclaiming fees in line with, you know, those standards as well. I do want to make one thing clear, that even if people cannot go ahead and afford to pay the reclaim fees, that will never go ahead and stand in the way of an animal going back to its owner. That's one thing I want to clarify, just to make sure.
Would that be a way, because I'm sure some of them just, the fees would be pretty much high. They might just leave them. Is there any way, put a payment plan or?
Yes, absolutely. Normally, what'll, somebody will come in and they'll say, you know, I only have $5 right now. That's not a problem. We'll go ahead and take that $5, and we will bill you for the rest.
Okay, good. Thank you. Council, Mayor?
I have a question. Thank you so much for coming in, and this is great that we're updating so that we'll be in compliance with the county. So for example, I was trying to read the beginning of A, so I'm stuck now with my daughter's cat until she comes back from college. So if Oreo gets loose and you all pick him up, then I have to pay per day? How many days you have him do? And how do you know if we're, if he runs away that he's at the animal shelter?
So if there, so there's two things. So if your cat gets away from you, we do what we call, it's, you get your one free pass.
Okay.
So if your cat's not microchipped, but we find your animal and you come pick up your animal, we will go ahead and waive that reclaim fee in lieu of a microchip. This way, if your cat ever gets out again, you know, we provide something that's like an Uber in the field. So we're going to call you, we're going to scan your cat and get it right back to you.
Uber in the field. Okay, so he's, so it's on record if they've been spayed and neutered in the county, correct? So that you do have different fees for vaccinated and unvaccinated?
So what they'll do is they will, most people will bring us a sheet that says, yes, my animal's been vaccinated. Rabies is the most important one, because by law, that is required.
Right.
Once they've done that, we will go ahead and, if they have a court fee or a court citation, we will go ahead and null that, just because they do need to be in compliance. The way that it was standing is it was per, so if you came to see me two or three times during a week for your animal, you get two to three citations.
I see.
This is just one and across the board, because otherwise, we're burdening both city and county court with multiple citations. One fee will take care of it all.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? If not, thank you. And I, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any opposition. Thank you.
Okay. Move right along to item C. Consider amendment to Section 18-94 of the Code of Ordinance for the City of Douglasville to remove the requirements that the animal ordinance violation community service work be completed at the animal shelter. Ms. Jordan?
Good evening once again, Council, Mayor. The first, the second page of the attachment has the way that the ordinance is currently written. This was a request by Judge Rollins. He was, under the previous ordinance, required to have community service assigned at the animal shelter as a consequence, as a penalty. This just allows for flexibility for just community service in general to be assigned for an animal-related violation. His reasoning behind that was if somebody maybe has mistreated an animal or has abandoned an animal or any other various animal violations within our ordinance, the animal shelter may not be the best place to have them serve. They may not be a willing and able worker. We may not want them around the animals. So that was his reasoning for that. And so we're just asking Council to consider this amendment to allow for a little bit more flexibility as to where that community service is assigned.
They may have allergies as well.
So you're saying, Ms. Jordan?
Allergies, that, that's, I didn't think about that, Mayor Pro Tem, but that is a good point. And Ms. Franzakowski can also comment if you guys have any questions as well for that, since she's here.
So you're saying there's community service workers, there's no more community service workers that come out?
They, they can, but it's no longer, right now, it's mandatory that they do their community service at the animal shelter. But this just says, the language on page three of the attachment, they can be assigned public service work not to exceed 100 hours, rather than public service work to be completed at the animal shelter.
Right.
So just, that could be an option, and if they wanted to, and if the judge thought that was appropriate, then he could assign that.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday, for Tuesday also. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. I don't see any opposition. I see heads shaking, nodding yes. Okay.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight. Item A is a consider request to amend the Personnel Policies and Procedures Ordinance of the City of Douglasville to provide for Good Fridays to be a holiday for city employees, to provide for additional annual leave accrual, to set a maximum annual leave hour accrual, to allow for paid parental leave, to amend provisions regarding employee compensation increases, to repeal any conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. And Ms. Austin-Beam, you've got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tia Austin-Beam, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council. Item A, as is presented, was presented, I'm sorry, as discussion, on the last round of meetings, as it relates to recruitment and retention strategies for city employees. As it relates to your attachments, I will be speaking from attachment named Red Line Version. We have provided the format here that Mayor Pro Tem mentioned in the last round to include a cleaner red line version for revisions, and then the blue font for additions to the personnel policies and procedures.
So Ms. Austin-Beam, I apologize for interrupting. Maybe it's not just on my iPad. There's a September one for 3:15 and 9:40. Which one are we?
Yes, ma'am, for 3:15.
Okay, that's the right one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. So we will move on to page two of the attachment. You will see Section 11-4, holidays. And again, we are recommending Good Friday as a city-paid holiday. We've also recommended a revision to the birthday holiday language to allow for it to be taken in the same month as the employee's birthday, as opposed to using it in the same pay period as the employee's birthday. So this just allows for more time to be able to use it instead of that limitation. Same page, if you scroll down a little further, Section 11-5 shows a recommendation to increase the maximum annual vacation accrual from 360 hours to 400 hours. On page three, if you scroll down, you will see the recommendations for increasing the biweekly vacation accrual amounts to allow for increased vacation time for new employees and more tenured employees. As discussed, as discussed with Finance Director Ms. Callan, increasing the vacation time accruals is a non-cash benefit. Page four, scroll down to page four, Section 11-7, and this is just a restatement of the maximum annual vacation accrual from 360 to 400 hours as it relates to payment for unused leave. So that is consistent. Scrolling a little bit further down on page seven, if you go down a little bit, we have updated our military leave language just to comply with federal law. So that is just a cleanup language in there and removing what is obsolete. On, down page, down on page nine, we have added a recommendation for six weeks of paid parental leave for the purpose of birth of a child, newly placed or adoption of a child. The employee must be employed for at least 12 months and have worked 1,250 hours. If the employee resigns within six months after receiving the paid leave, then they must reimburse the city for that paid leave. And that is also, the paid leave is also a non-cash benefit as well. Down on page 18 of your attachment is Section 12-8. Once again, you will see a restatement of the maximum annual vacation accrual from 360 to 400 hours as it relates to death in service and what the employee's beneficiary is eligible for. And that would be the maximum of the 400 hours for payment of unused leave. Same page, just a little further down, paragraph, Section 5-12. This is the recommendation that promoted employees will receive their annual merit increase upon promotion, and that includes the maximum budgeted percentage for merit increases for the fiscal year. The employee will receive their next merit increase after they are in the role for 12 months of continued service. So this would eliminate the waiting period. Section 5-13 on page 20, this recommends an increase from 3% to 5% for newly promoted hourly employees. So currently, and we've been at that percentage for a very long time, I'll just say that, but we are recommending an increase. And again, all these recommendations to update the PPP are for the recruitment and retention of potential and current employees. And I'm happy to take any questions on item A.
Any comments, questions from anybody? Just, I just, I know that we've discussed, we've discussed this in prior meetings, and, you know, we're trying to compete with, trying to keep folks employed, and I applaud y'all's efforts, Ms. Austin-Beam and Personnel, getting this, getting this to, getting this to us. Just if, it's just amazing the way the job market has changed just in such a short amount of time. But, but I, you know, we're keeping up with, with folks, so appreciate all of y'all's efforts in that. Does anybody see anything they have a question about? Yes, sir, Mr. Estes?
Just a quick question. On the first item with Good Friday as an added holiday, is there any reason to make that just a floating holiday as opposed to a specific date on the calendar?
It was a recommendation from the mayor. I know there are other governments, inclusive of the county government, that has Good Friday off, but it's at you all's pleasure.
I just wonder if maybe, I mean, if the, if the end game is to, for retention, if it might not better serve to have it open. I don't know. I'm just asking the question because everything else is set, specific days. It might be nice to have one that's just a floating holiday that people could take whenever they want it.
That's their birthday. It's kind of their floating holiday. And the only reason why I made the recommendation, I don't, I don't disagree. We can have conversation about it. It's just that the county and WSA had Good Friday off, and so just trying to mirror what the county was doing.
And it's not just the county. I mean, a lot of entities, a lot of...
I don't disagree with that. I'm just asking if it, if it might be advantageous from an HR perspective to have it floating as opposed to set on any specific date.
I think that what we have right now, as far as what we recommend, it is competitive with what other governments have, but I don't see any reason why, if it was your pleasure to adopt a floating holiday instead, that it would still be for, you know, the recruitment and retention purposes of, of having more holidays than, and being in line with our peers than we have now. Because it's, you know, it's a paid off, it's a paid holiday regardless.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So is it, is it on or off, the holiday, Good Friday?
I'm all for adding another holiday. I think that's a great idea. I just was wondering whether having a set date was the best way to go about doing it. And it sounds like it really doesn't matter, that just adding a day is enough. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other questions or?
Coach, I'd just comment. I think that Councilman Estes has a great idea, and I would hope that that floating holiday would be considered at their birthday so that they can take it whenever. And our counselor just mentioned, what happens if we give a floating holiday? How many people do you limit that to? I mean, it just seems to me it would, it would present a nightmare as far as how many were going to take off, and they just happen would present a nightmare as far as how many were going to take off. And they just happened to decide to take off that same day. Then you may have a staffing issue. It's not likely. You're going to have a lot of people that go have the same birthday.
Right.
So by setting it, then you close.
That's a good point.
It's done. And then you're back at work.
That's a good point.
Work week.
Because it does allow for planning. You know, you know everybody's going to be out on this date, whether it's Thanksgiving, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, whatever it is. But the birthday thing, how many people have same day?
Sure, thank you.
But that, that's a good point. Any, any other questions or comments? All right. So my question to Council is whether or not we can place this on the consent agenda? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Looks like yes.
All right, item B. Consider in addition to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Ordinance of the City of Dougsville, which establishes the policy for the purchase and distribution of gift cards by the city for employee retention and recognition. And Ms. Austin Bing also will handle this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is in addition to the Personnel Policies and Procedures that allows for city manager authorization for purchase of gift cards and gift cards amounts from expenses approved and adopted in the fiscal year budget. Gift cards will be used for employee incentives, again, retention. And the Human Resources Department will create and maintain a tracking system for distribution. So city manager authorization of the amounts and for whatever department that will have that request. And then Human Resources will create the tracking and sign off distribution for those. Any questions?
Okay. Any comments or questions on, on this item? Ms. Hampton?
I just want to note that just from the standpoint, the purpose of this is to really streamline and put this in policy. It should not be that any department can just make a decision to go buy gift cards. Gift cards do present themselves as a gratuity for employees because it is money. So therefore, we do things like when we do employee appreciation and our holiday bonus, you all do approve that as, as a part of that. So we just want to make certain that there's not, we do have purchasing cards that are being used. And once somebody swipes the purchasing card, sometimes it's after the fact. So we just want to make certain that this is put in policy on how we do that, how we choose to do it, and making certain that that information is not only placed in the budget, but there is a process for securing that. And there is a tracking system. And that's being done by Human Resources.
Okay, yes. Mayor Protem?
And that's, is that considered income for the employee then? Do they have to add it to their?
We don't count it as income. I mean, I don't think we, have we ever counted it as income, Karen. We don't, but it is considered as, since almost like a bonus. So that's why, for instance, when you come into, I should say, like, a non-income bonus. So when you see your resolution for the holiday pay, it states that. When we've done the incentive that we recently did with the American Rescue Plan for those employees who weren't eligible for the cash benefit, that was income because they didn't have the time, we provided a gift card. So.
I just didn't want to see any employees get in trouble with the IRS because, you know, they get in, they get a, you know, if it comes in like that and they don't-
Ms. Callen has a financial statement for you.
Remember to report that on their taxes or something like that. I don't want to get them, get in trouble. You're using, you throwing Latin at us?
Anyway, de minimis is said, a certificate that allows an employee to receive a specific item of personal property. That is minimum in value, provided infrequently and is administratively impractical to a given.
It's like somebody getting a gift, like a t-shirt or flowers or something like that. Okay, just like I said, I just don't want to see employees get in trouble because they, they don't remember to report that as income and, you know, they get-
Correct. And that's the other part of this policy is that, as she said, $50 and under is controlling the dollar value. That's the other part of this as well.
Thank you.
Is it, is it possible, you have one department that's got a much bigger budget and another smaller department that, I mean, can you, can we find ourselves in a situation where one department gives away more of these and another department doesn't?
Actually, Councilman Watts, I'm, I'm of the notion that HR would be really the only department doing a reward-type program with gift cards. The Police Department already has something that they've been doing for years. So it's not something I would take away from the Police Department. But it, it's going to be very rare that a department director will be able to come and get permission from me to start handing out gift cards. It will have to be a very special circumstance, and that circumstance would probably have to be approved by you all. I can see circumstances where, for instance, we may have a storm and Greg Roberts may want to come in and say, hey, city manager, can we, can I reward my guys and ladies for coming in extra? Those are the kinds of things that, that would be approved under that. It wouldn't be Ms. Austin Bing decides, she just had a great month in HR and we're just all going to get gift cards to go to Longhorns. It would not be for those kinds of things.
So other than the Police Department, which has already got their own, this is all going to come under HR and they're going to go through HR, any department that wants to do something like that?
Absolutely. Because one of the things we also want to prevent is we want to make certain that there is a streamlined process also because you all have heard at times where employees may deem someone has an unfair system. So they didn't get something that someone else received. And that always ends up in HR's lap. So HR can, in some sense, be the overseer of how things are done and make certain that it is fair and equitable across the board throughout the city. Another reason to place it there.
Sounds, sounds like a good idea. Keeps us out of trouble. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If it's all right with Council, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda? All right. And item number, or item C, sorry. Item C, adopt a resolution to provide merit pay increases for employees promoted during 2022 prior to September 6, 2022. And Ms. Austin Bing, who hardly ever has anything to say, is going to handle this one also.
This item, item C, provides for administrative procedures of promotion increases for employees promoted in calendar year 2022. Any employee promoted during fiscal year 2022 prior to September 6, we are recommending a 3% promotion increase. Any employee promoted during fiscal year 23 prior to September 6 will receive a five, we are recommending to receive a 5% increase. And this is based on the fiscal budget. We are proposing to apply all of these increases for those employees in those categories payable on the first pay period in October, which is October 15. Finance Director Ms. Callen, we reviewed these costs and associated with this recommendation, and it is approximately $86,000 to include salaries and benefits. And another note to make is we are, on average, promoting around 25 employees a year internally. We have a policy that also supports that. We are to look within before we go out to the external market. So during, doing a three-year look back, we've averaged about 25 employees a year that have been promoted. This year, inclusive of that, and also with the recommendation that this is budgeted, we do have this in the budget. And so we would like to move forward with rewarding all the employees that have been promoted in calendar year 2022. But there are two different categories based on when they were promoted.
So calendar, so anything up to September the 6th from this past calendar year is 3% if they're promoted?
If they're promoted essentially before July 1st. That would be 3%. If they were promoted after July 1st, which is fiscal, in this fiscal year 23, we are recommending 5%, just because of what we've adopted for the budget.
Gotcha.
And, and just to explain that, the language that, that you all subsequently approving by putting on the consent agenda states that the merit rate will be based on whatever was budgeted for that year. So in fiscal year 2022, the merit increase was 3%. That was the max. So that's why those individuals promoted prior to June 30th of this year is at 3%. And those after are 5%. That's based on what's in the budget. This clears everyone up for 20, calendar year 2022. So when we get to January of 2023, we won't have anybody who lags behind. This clears everything up. But it is based on the fiscal year in which someone was promoted, based on what was the actual promoted maximum rate in that fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Any questions or comments on this item? And I'm going to ask that question. Can we place this on consent agenda for Tuesday?
Looks like you go.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. You've got everything on the consent agenda for Tuesday.
Thank you all so much for this.
Yeah, enjoy your long weekend. All right. Madam Mayor, that is all I had tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the HR team, and especially Ms. Austin Bing and Dr. Westfield. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Planning and Development. Authorize the city to accept right-of-way deed from KLLB AIV LLC granting to the city the rights of way of Presley Mill Road and Timber Ridge Drive adjacent to tax parcel number 0054015002. Mr. Marcus Thompson is going to help us with that. How are you, Mr. Thompson? Pretty good. How about yourself? Good. Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. This item is basically housekeeping business. Initially, the right-of-way dedication was accepted at the July 5, 2022 council meeting. But due to property ownership issues, the city could not proceed with the preparation of the deed. Now that the ownership issues have been resolved, we can proceed with the deed if accepted by the mayor and council. Are there any questions or concerns? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Basically, a housekeeping issue, we've already gone through this. We just did not have the deed prepared nor signed into record, correct? That's correct. Okay. Questions, comments? Anyone? So we're gaining right-of-way on Timber Ridge and on Presley Mill Road? Yes, sir. Okay. No question, no comment? Any reason we would not place this on the consent agenda? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight under Planning and Development. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. Mr. Thompson, we'll move on then to item 11, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Birthday Girl. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of items. And I would like to start with item A. Authorizes the mayor to sign the 2022 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Certification. Major J.R. Davidson.
That's not Major Davidson, that's Captain Staff.
Hi, Brad Stafford. Sorry, Major Davidson couldn't be here tonight. So I'll gladly take his place, probably do a much better job.
You know this is being recorded, right?
Yeah. Madam Mayor and Council, Brad Stafford, Police Department, 2083 Fairville Road. This is a procedural paperwork that we do every time we get a burn grant. The burn grant, again, is a non-matching grant. You guys have already voted and approved the grant. This is paperwork that the mayor has to sign essentially saying that we understand the rules of the grant and certifying the grant.
And this comes, what, once a year, once every two or three years?
I'm sorry, sir.
This grant, is it once a year?
I believe we do have, I believe the burn grant does come through every year.
Yeah, I remember. That's why I asked. Mayor and Council? Okay, and I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Tuesday. Thank you. I believe, by the way, stay on up there. Because we're going to have some, we're going to have some questions. Okay.
And the women all, the women pause when Captain Stafford comes in the room. They all start fainting and things, you know. Just letting you know.
Okay. Item, item B, amend ordinance 14, that's one regarding gaming machines to update the reference to state law code section to add a provision for penalties violation of the provision of the section 14-1 to allow for business license replication for a business affiliated with a violation of section 14-1. Ms. Jordan?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council. So this was another revision that Judge Rollins brought to our attention and requested that the council consider. The first part in section A of 14-1 on page two of the attachment, this shows where we have updated references to state code section. The state actually moved everything from a revenue and taxation title to a, to another title, Title 50 in the, in OCGA. So we had to go through and make those adjustments to make our ordinance compatible with state code. The highlighted portion on that page two is what is being proposed to actually add to the ordinance. Apparently, Judge Rollins has shared with me, and Police Chief has shared with me as well, that there are a number of establishments paying out cash for gaming amusement machines specifically taking place at gas stations. And so this is designed to provide a penalty for that, to be treated as a misdemeanor. Because it is being treated as a misdemeanor in the proposed revision, you could have a penalty up to 12 months of jail time and $1,000 fine. The other addition would be that a business that is in the practice of paying out cash for those amusement machines could have their business license revoked.
Ms. Jordan, I have a question. You're telling me that in them gas station, them casino machines giving out cash instead of gifts?
They're not supposed to be, Captain Stafford.
Captain Stafford, Police Department, 2083 Fairville Road. This problem is actually more pervasive than you would realize. But many of these establishments bring these gaming machines in, are, they're, they're not supposed to give monetary reward if they win it. They're playing slot machine in there essentially. And many of them are. And this ordinance will allow us to charge this charge through the city rather than a state charge. And it will allow us some flexibility in going after the business owners with fines and citations rather than arresting them. And our special operations unit has already made arrests, and these cases have already made several cases against these individuals. This is a request on their part as well as the judge to help them go after these folks and do it more quickly and in a streamlined fashion than the way they have to do it now going by the state charge.
May have to put up a sign, if you got gambling problems, you need some help. Because the machines, they be crowded late night when I get off work.
Yeah. Well, if you've ever been in some of these places, you'll notice there's always somebody that's in there playing them. And most of the time, they're not doing it for coupons.
No, they getting paid. Mayor and Council.
I have a question. So what's the point of playing if you're not going to win? What's the game? It's virtual? What? I mean, if you go near the play.
They're supposed to get non-monetary prizes, discounts in the store, different things like that. They're not supposed to ever pay out in cash. But any of them are, obviously. You see how crowded they are. There's reasons why people are sitting in there for hours on end in the gas station.
Madam Mayor, you never seen them sitting in there all day?
I have. I thought it was legal to win. Why you sitting playing if you're not going to win? That's, that don't make sense to me.
You go into a video arcade and you play the machines there, but you wouldn't expect to actually get cash back when you play a video game.
That's a kid game. I'm talking about real people games. So, but the lottery tickets, you can win cash, right?
Yes, ma'am. Lottery tickets is different. It's not a gaming device.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I was going to, Mr.?
Captain Watts? Yes, sir.
Should the, should we include in this ordinance clarification some type of signage for each of these machines? If the machines are going to stay in place and are not supposed to pay out cash, maybe, because if I'm a customer and I'm expecting to play a machine for cash, and I see a sign up there that says- I see a sign up there that says this machine does not pay out cash or whatever, I don't know if that would help clarify things for a lot of the customers going forward.
Some of them are up there already. I've been in the stores, and they do have signs up. Yep, so it's open season, just like down at Harris Cherokee, open season.
Councilman Watts, to address, to address your question, that is, there, some of those requirements are under state law. And just like Captain Stafford said, they could, they could already prosecute these items under state law, but you can really be more effective sometimes with saying, we're going to take your business license away than just, you know, slapping them with a fine. You can still slap them with a fine, whether they're a business owner, the person working there that actually completes that transaction, the person participating in the gaming, but sometimes it, it actually does hurt a little more if, if that is a threatened penalty.
We can more rapidly go through these citations and our investigations with them than running it all through the state court.
I got one more question. Other worries, if you get caught so many times, can you haul the machines off? And do you like to do it?
I don't, I'm not sure. I'm, surely if we catch somebody doing something illegal, there are, you know, ways we can seize property and so on. I'm not sure if that's what they have in mind to do, our special operations or along with the chief. I'm sure that we're going to start off with lesser enforcement and do some education and let these people know this is what's, what can happen and what can't happen, and fines and so on. And then if it gets to the point where, you know, they're not going to comply, then we have a different route.
Will all the businesses get a letter notifying them what's, what's happening after we approve it?
I'd have to ask the chief on whether he plans on notifying these people that, you know, they're, they're already aware of what the law is, they're doing it anyway. So I don't know if he'll send a letter to them or, or not.
Thank you, sir. And of course, from the mayor and council, Watts, Coach Watts?
I was just, one last question. Is it just gas stations that are doing this, or are there any other type of establishments that are?
It's mostly gas stations and small convenience stores where we see them doing it.
Not your major quick trick, none of those. Let me get smaller ones.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question for, for Major Davidson, I mean, Captain Stafford. Captain, do you see that this would be potentially a cause for additional loitering and potentially problems around those locations?
I mean, most of the people that are engaged in this, where I see them, they're, they're sitting in there. Some of the places put together a pretty palatial room for them to sit around and do this. So they do loiter in there, whether or not they've really caused, I can't say they've caused us a lot of problems. They're usually pretty engaged in what they're doing.
Okay. Just curious.
Most of the ones I've seen, they're sitting in a, sitting in a room and pulling the lever.
All these places that we're talking about also sell alcohol, beer and things like that, is there anything like that going on in conjunction with this? People buying, you know?
Councilmen, I can't say that we've, we've really had a huge problem with, with them drinking or getting out of hand when they're doing, when they're doing what they're doing. I mean, we don't take a lot of calls on that.
Councilwoman Watts, a good way to, you see, you pull in the gas station, see all these cars? Then when you go in, just see one person paying for gas, then you got to look around the corner, peek around the corner, they don't go around there, and you see them.
I just figured they had really good coffee there or something. I just, I didn't know all that was going on. I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Thank you. I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for, for Monday.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions, speak now or forever.
Hold your peace.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight. Item A, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Douglasville and the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., C V B, regarding use by C V B of a portion of the city's hotel motel tax for promotion of tourism conventions and trade shows. And Ms. Rosado will handle this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Samantha Rosado, Assistant Conference Center and Tourism Director, 12385 Veterans Memorial Highway. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay. In front of you is our annual agreement between the city of Douglasville and the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding the expenditure of funds from the hotel motel tax revenues. This is a routine agreement, and we presented it to you all for the past four years.
Rosado, is there any changes in the, I didn't notice any, but?
No, sir, there are not any changes aside from just the dates that will be changed of when we submit things for next year.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Mayor and Council? All right, we're going to place this one on consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Rosado.
Thank you.
Item B, authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Georgia Recreation and Park Associations, Inc., and the conflict of interest and disclosed policy to participate in the Georgia Recreation and Park Association, Inc.'s boost program, under which the city's Parks and Recreation Department receive funding and provide comprehensive out-of-school time services to K-12 students. And Ms. Thrasher will handle this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Watts. Shaharid Thrasher, 8830 Gurley Road, Parks and Recreation, Recreation Program Manager. So this is a renewal contract with Georgia Recreation and Parks Association. We received this same grant last fiscal year. It's for $53,500. It is a non-matching grant. It provides through the Georgia After School statewide network, so that is who the grant is with, and then we have the third-party contract with GRPA. We previously received this grant in 2022, and it aided us to provide after-school services free of charge to students last school year, and we did a plethora of different things with that program. So this is just a continuance of last year's, last fiscal year's grants.
What type of participation did y'all have in this program last year? Was it down because of COVID or?
So last fiscal year, we noted that we had a transportation barrier with the kids. We also received a grant mid-school year, so we had to go through hiring for the employees and all of that. We, it did allow for us to begin providing some services for the summertime, so we were able to give some grants out to students to participate in some STEM programs. We also provided the service for free last fiscal year because we had a plethora amount of money to spend in a short amount of time. So we partnered, they participate in Taekwondo, ballet, STEM mentorship, so we partnered with a lot of third-party contractors to come in and participate with us.
So the grant, does the grant pay like salary for the person running the program and things like that?
Correct. It pays for the salary, it can pay for transportation, it pays for any services, it'll pay for field trips, snacks, so we utilize the grant to hire the after-school staff that we have.
And my last question is, the, well, I guess the, the transportation part is the next item, so I'll wait on that. Any questions from Mayor and Council? Yes, ma'am.
I do have a quick question. Thank you so much for the presentation. I didn't see, there's a match. Did you say it was a match? What's the percentage?
It's a non-matching grant.
A non-matching grant? I apologize. I didn't see that. That's why I didn't see it, because it's not a match there. Do you have hard numbers on how many young people or how many kids were served, or could you get that to us later?
So last fiscal year, there were 39 children that signed up.
Okay, that's a good number.
And the grant is based upon the size of the county and then the resources that we already have provided to our community. So the $53,500 is the max that we can get in Douglas County. And so with that being said, we were able to service 39 kids that signed up, and then they were able to participate in various programs, activities, and then plus the kids we were able to give scholarships to during the summertime.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I spoke to Mr. Bass yesterday, and he mentioned, I was asking about the numbers, and he said that their focus was more on quality as opposed to quantity, so that if the numbers are smaller, it just gives them more ability to add to the quality.
That's a good punch, 39 is a good number.
Yeah, yeah. And how long, so they come after school, and how long are they there for?
So with this fiscal year, they will, we will be operating from 2:30 to 6:30, and it will be at Jesse Davis Park. So with item C, we'll provide the transportation throughout the schools, through all Douglas County schools, but they will be there from 2:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday.
Is it first come, first served, or is it based on any criteria like income or anything like that?
So right now, we're only doing, so right now, I haven't opened it up generally to the public. We've partnered with the social workers of Douglas County Schools. We've also partnered with the community and schools, with Douglas County Schools, as well as their homeless and foster coordinators. So I've sent those registrations directly to those individuals to identify families in need before I open it to the public, because I know it'll go fast.
Sounds, sounds like a great program. Any, any other questions or comments before I place this on the consent agenda?
Looks like it goes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thrasher. So we will place that on a consent agenda, and I guess you're going to hang around for the next item. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with I Commute Kids Transportation, LLC for after-school transportation to Jesse Davis Park for children enrolled in the Douglasville Parks and Recreation After School Enrichment Program during the 2022-2023 school year. Ms. Thrasher.
Yes, so this is for Mayor and Council to sign an agreement with I Commute Transportation, LLC to provide the after-school transportation for the youth signed up for our after-school program. The fees will be paid through the G C A N grant, which is the previous item, so the fee will not be incurred on the parents. They, we would pay that fee, and then the parents would just pay us for the after-school fee. We will cover all of Douglas County elementary schools, and because middle school gets out a little later, we will only be looking at doing Stewart Middle, since it's right across the street from Jesse Davis Park. So we will do all of the county elementary and then focus on Stewart Middle School, getting those kids in after-school programs.
So the, so I Commute provides the transportation?
Yes, sir. We actually, again, with that partnership with the county, they knew from last fiscal year that we were looking for transportation, so they actually referred them to us. I Commute have, went through the process. They also did our background check process too with their bus drivers. They're a new company, but they do have a 14-passenger bus available for us.
That's great. Any, any, yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
I do have a question. You said the county was at a, we're providing service for the entire county and not just city for elementary students.
For, we're gonna, for the after-school program?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. So I Commute, they can travel throughout Douglas County. So we're going to, I sent it out to identify the families in need. So for instance, especially the kids who may have been displaced because, because of homelessness, we won't have a, a set limit of transportation location, area where we have to service. So if that child, because I Commute is, will cover all of Douglas County, if that child is in a further away location than Jesse Davis Park is, they can pick up that child from that school and bring them to Jesse Davis Park.
Okay. Does the county have the same program, or it's just the city?
For the after-school program or?
Yes, ma'am.
The county does have an after-school program inside their schools, but they have a set limit of students that they can enroll.
Okay. I'm going, I don't want to talk about little people, so I don't want to do jurisdictional lies, I just don't want us to turn away kids in the city, and they're coming to the city park for city services, and we're using, getting young people from the county, but I'm going to leave that alone, because they kids.
Now, when you say county, are you talking about the, the Board of Education or?
Douglas County School System.
Okay, the school system, right, so.
Yes.
Okay, right. Well, and, but last year, we had 38, so.
Thirty, yes, sir, and 39. And it's really because we didn't want to put a limit on, especially because we're trying to service the kids at need, and definitely those kids that may have been displaced. They may be city residents, but they may be going to another school or, you know, domestic violence. We just, right now, it's just specifically internally for the county school system to identify those kids that may be in need of this service.
So the, the kids that we're reaching out to, we're, we're targeting them based on criteria, and you mentioned foster type situations and things like that, so.
Kids that really need our.
The kids that are really in need are going to be the focus of getting enrolled in this program.
And then we'll open it up to, you know, to provide it to everyone, but we wanted to focus on those kids in need.
Any other questions or comments? Going to place this on the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Thrasher. Item D, appoint Scott Camp as a post-three member of the Douglasville Public Art Commission for a term ending July 1st, 2026. Ms. Jackson has this one.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As you all know, the Public Arts Commission has seven members on that board. Post-three is a nominee from the Downtown Development Authority. During the August 1st meeting of the Downtown Development Authority, they voted to nominate Mr. Scott Camp to serve in that post-three member, and Mr. Camp willingly accepted. And I can entertain any questions regarding this post, and it expires July 1st, 2026.
Any comments or, and this is his first time being asked to be on this?
Yes, sir. It's his first time being on the Public Arts Commission, as well as Mr. Camp started serving on the Downtown Development Authority at the end of 2021. So he's also a new member of the Downtown Development Authority as well.
Okay. Well, his participation on that board, the Downtown Development Authority, I mean, he wouldn't, we wouldn't want him to roll off of that and be on, on this. He, he's kind of representing both, right, so?
Correct. He's representing both at the time that he would need to be reappointed. If he would like to be reappointed, then I will come before you all regarding his reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority, and then he would just stay on for the Public Arts Commission. If he does roll off the Downtown Development Authority, which his expiration date will be in 2024, then the Downtown Development Authority will have to nominate a new individual to serve on the Public Arts Commission post-three seat.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? All right, we'll place this on the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all I have tonight under Parks, Recreation and Culture and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Watts. We'll move on to item 15, Technology Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item this evening under the Technology Committee, and that is to authorize the mayor to accept, quote, number 005281 with ByteWorks LLC for information technology services. I'm surprised that number isn't in binary, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, please enlighten us on this issue.
Yes, sir. Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. Sam Jenkins, 6695 Church Street. So what we have right here is, and this was Opera Funded as well, but this is an upgrade of a bit of our network infrastructure with Cisco gear. Some of those are coming into life as well, so this was an opportunity with the Opera Fund to replace some of those. So we have some network switches for our network access, also some Wi-Fi, and also some sensors that we put in our server room and data room to alert us if the temperature gets too warm or we detect water leaks. We work with Mr. Greg on this right here, so he's on our emails if the temperature gets too warm or we see leaks, hit our email, Greg, and also the I T team to let us know some issues, but mainly they're just to upgrade our network infrastructure replacements. Any question about any of the gears or?
Do we have any questions, Mayor and Council? Any networking issues? Silence is deafening. You've done your job, Mr. Jenkins. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I, yeah, I guess we can put this one on the consent agenda as well, right? Everybody's okay with that. That is all I have under the Technology Committee at this time. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Would you mind, please, taking Transportation Committee, you're the vice chair?
I would be happy to do that. We have no business at this time under the Transportation Committee, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to other business. Is there any other business that come, become before Council tonight from the elected body? I don't see any, so we'll move on then to updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Good evening, once again. Attorney Dotson and I will be at a conference. We will miss you guys next Tuesday evening.
Okay.
But it looks like since everything went on the consent agenda, then we are, you guys are all set. It is the city and county attorneys seminar up in Athens.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The police department. Captain Stafford, you have anything? Okay, thank you. All right. Stand that attention. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just note, as Ms. Jordan mentioned, you all, all your items on, on the consent agenda for Tuesday. However, you do have an executive session on Tuesday, so just couldn't make it too quick. Yeah, just could not make it too quick. Mr. Roberts is here. If anybody has any questions on the Labor Day parade and participation, if you need, have any questions for him, he can address that. And then also, just to remind you all that City Hall will be closed on Monday in observance of Labor Day, and that's all I have.
Thank you so much, city manager. Mr. Roberts, the time and place, where we're supposed to be?
10:00 AM.
Yes, sir. Same as the 4th of July?
The one, one good advantage is that we have Rayland to do temporary paving work at Church Street at the amphitheater, so we're gonna go back to the old route. July 4th route didn't work out as well for us.
Yes, sir.
And between our department, my department and the police department staffing, took a lot more people to do it the other way, so it was a, so we got that open back up. But I think we're good to go.
10 o'clock Monday.
On the fire truck, council members, mayor.
You driving, Mr. Roberts? You driving?
Or you can drive it?
No.
No, it might stop.
I don't know. Might not want to put me on.
I can tell you that, that truck will work you out. Ninety-fourty-seven, straight shift.
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate you. Yes, sir. Then we'll move on to staff report. We do have a staff report on SPOLOST intergovernmental agreement, and that will be handled by our city manager, Ms. Hampton, and our finance director, Ms. Karen Callan.
Just a real brief update. Ms. Jordan has sent over our comments to the county government on the intergovernmental agreement for SPOLOST. The goal, of course, for the county government is to have this information ready for and adopted and passed by September 15th. There was a paragraph in the intergovernmental agreement that referenced our SDS agreement and also our commitment to fire services. As you all remember and recall, I requested that that information be removed. Now, there was comments from the county attorney referring to the fact that we would not be able to utilize our SPOLOST proceeds for any capital funding toward fire. But I think your general counsel, Mr. Dotson, would agree with me when I say that the county does not have a right to tell us how to use our funds. So I appreciate their feedback, but we will proceed accordingly. Also, I would have Ms. Callan to come up to tell you the reason for moving forward in the way that we are. There are financial advantages for us to having a six-year SPOLOST in turn signing that intergovernmental agreement and working out as best a agreement that we can with the county because we, we do lose some funding. We, we can plan for it, but it would be in our best interest to go forward with signing that six-year agreement.
Yes, so just running the numbers on a six-year SPOLOST, you just have, you know, over a five-year SPOLOST, you have an additional year. And considering each year, you're going to have growth. You know, and the most recent growth we've had been 10, 11, 12%. We don't expect that, you know, if you project not maybe 5% growth, that fifth year, I mean, the sixth year really increases our SPOLOST proceeds over time.
And, and currently, we are not going to, through this 2022 SPOLOST, we're not bonding out any proceeds. So we are going to do what you've heard us say is PEGO. So our money will be accumulated over time. If we were to have a five-year SPOLOST, the, basically, the county gets 20% of that off the top. So not only do you lose that fifth year, but you lose those funds as well. And the county is bonding out money. So that money has to be paid in advance before any of the cities actually receive any proceeds. So just know that. We're not in a place where, like with the 2016 SPOLOST, we had all of these projects where we were just ready to go. We are fortunate that our ARPA fund has been utilized for our capital program so that SPOLOST can just follow through when ARPA is completed. But nonetheless, SPOLOST is gonna be very important for us. But we have planned for the ability to wait for another two to three years to see where the economy lands. But it definitely was in our best interest to work out a amenable agreement with the county for a six-year SPOLOST. And again, I received the information from the county attorney, but we're proceeding.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hampton, is there a reason, so the reason the county may have wanted to go to a five rather than a six is because in the six-year SPOLOST, there is no 20% off the top first. Is that correct?
I'm thinking they just, from what I perceived, and this is being in the meeting that was held, I just think that they were just not wanting to deal with the back and forth with the cities. So from their perspective, they were like, hey, look, you all don't want a six-year SPOLOST. We'll take our 20% cut. We don't want to fight with you all. And plus, they're bonding out money. So they're gonna get their money, you know, upfront. So I, I think they were taking the posture that they would be willing to lose that additional year, knowing that, one, the cities will lose out on the additional year and also lose that additional funding.
But my question was yes or no. In other words, if they go to a five-year SPOLOST and they bond out and get 20% off the top, would they have gotten 20% off the top with a six-year SPOLOST first?
No.
They would not. Okay, okay. I thought that was a great.
It's too late to go to a five-year SPOLOST. Anyone vouchs for it?
Thank you. Did they know that?
Any other comments from Council? Thank you so much, Ms. Callan and city manager, Ms. Hampton. So is that all we have for the staff report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have come to the time and the agenda. We're comments from citizens and delegates. If you'd like to come forward and speak to us, you have five minutes to speak to myself and Council about anything germane to the City of Douglasville, give us your name and address. No take, as Councilwoman Davis, as you can say. If not, then I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss property acquisition. Thank you so, thank you so much. This has been properly moved and second moved by Councilwoman Davis and second by Mayor Pro Tim Miller to adjourn to executive session to discuss a property acquisition. All those in favor of going to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Do we need a recess? No? Okay, keep, yes. After a five-minute recess, we'll return to go into executive session to discuss a property acquisition.